Thank you, Kaz. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We're always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the public agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation, law limits, discussion of individual personnel, and confidential matters. We hope our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packet, and the Times on January 9, 2025, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 0168, Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this in-person meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 3881. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered extensions. In the event that NJSA 18A 3881 is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Okay, roll call. Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Beth Baron.
Here.
Adam Bierman.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Mara Franceschi.
Here.
Eleanor Hubbard.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Ari Meisel.
Here.
Christopher Santarpio.
Hello.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Hi.
We have four.
Thanks for coming.
I missed last week, last month.
Okay, so can I get an adoption of the minutes for August 20th? Ari, second. Debbie, and just remember if you were here or not, because I don't think a lot of people were here, but I was here.
Ari and.
Ari and Debbie.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Adam Bierman.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes, yes.
Eleanor Hubbard.
Abstain.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Ari Meisel.
Yes.
Christopher Santarpio.
Abstain.
Catherine Lyer.
Abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Harsh. And that is because we had to change the meeting at the last minute. Usually, we have perfect attendance. So moving on now, welcome, everyone. We do have several people from the public here. Thank you for joining us. The school year's off to a good start, as the superintendent will let us know. And I'm going to take this time to introduce our new student board members. We have Annie Bettencourt and Ash Neiman. Did I say that right? Okay, welcome. And do you want to take a few minutes, tell us about yourselves? And then later on, we'll come back to you if you have something that you want to talk about.
Okay. Hi, my name's Ani. I'm a senior at Princeton High School. I'm very active in sports, and I'm interested in studying medicine of the future and hope to get into college this year.
Hi, my name's Ash Neiman. I'm also a senior at Princeton High School. I am co-leader of Vote 16 Princeton, and I go to Juilliard for vocal performance, and I'm hoping to study political science and music.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome. We know that senior year is very busy, so we'll try to have your report at the front of the agenda. And so if you're bored or you just have things to do, feel free to leave after that, but we welcome you to stay. And, okay, so now we're moving on now. Oh, to the superintendent. Hello.
Hello.
So happy you're here.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you very much, Ms. Kendall. It has been a good start to the school year. It's September 30, and we've got a month in the books already, and the back-to-school nights have occurred, and I think everything is going well, and there are positive vibes out in the schools for the most part. I have kind of a number of items on my agenda that are going to take some time, including multiple presentations, so I'm going to begin with the first one. And the first one has to do with the 250th anniversary or celebration or set of celebrations of the Revolutionary War. And over the summer, Dr. Two and I were notified about a couple of opportunities very early on in the school year, September 17, which is hard to pull off for some districts to enable special celebrations to happen that early. But we enlisted the help of our supervisor of humanities, Keisha Smith Carrington, who tried to corral as many students and staff members as she could to partake in a special set of events in Newark. So we've invited Ms. Smith Carrington and one of the students, one of the 50 or so, or however many went from Princeton High School, to talk a little bit about what they experienced and what they saw. And we really appreciate you taking the time tonight to come to share. So please.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here tonight with Avery, who is going to be my co-facilitator for the evening. Come closer. To my knowledge, one of Dr. LaSousa's first acts as superintendent for us was actually approving the district to be a revolutionary schools district. And so as a revolutionary schools district, we were one of the districts across the state who received exclusive invitation status for the events on the 17th, which did include multiple portions of the day. So as we move forward, if we click or move the deck, yeah. So the morning agenda consisted of two workshops, which were each facilitated by one of the recent teachers of the year. And it so happens, of course, that both of them were history teachers who were giving us the pleasure of that instruction for the day. And so as we move forward, you'll see the title of the first session that we went to. So the first session focused on revolutionary ideals, the promises, and the contradictions. And to the right of the ideals that were shared with us that day, you'll see a quote from John Adams, which was kind of one of the dovetails, to an extent. I didn't get a picture of the second quote, but the dovetails for us really considering when exactly did the revolution occur. And so there was a lot of thought and a lot of practice where we, pretty much in a small group, unpacked a document-based question. So we looked at primary sources and really worked through, as a team, some of the thinking around those ideals. And then we got to a portion of the morning that Avery's going to share about, where we had some dignitaries come in and speak to us in that smaller setting.
Yeah, so first, we got to meet the lieutenant governor, Taisha Way, and that was pretty cool, especially for me as a student who's interested in going into politics. It was cool to kind of see up close and personal. And then, secondly, we got to meet Ken Burns. And for those of you guys who don't know, he's a very well-recognized history documentarian. And it was really cool to see him and see his work. He showed us, this was later in the afternoon, but he showed us part of his unreleased American Revolution documentary, and it was really cool to see his process and get to know him better as a person.
And then, of course, we had the Commissioner of Education, as well as later in the morning, a representative from the Newark Public Library who spoke with us. And so the second workshop for the morning was actually one where, you'll see in a moment, we got to look at some different voices of the revolution than those we typically note in our history courses. And so this gave us an opportunity to hear about some of the perspectives from that time. And so these are just three examples of probably 20 or more that were divided across all of us. And there were some interesting facts. Some of us knew about the fact that there was a connection to Nova Scotia, but one of the representatives in front of you not only had a connection to Nova Scotia, but then ended up in Sierra Leone. And so there was a lot of conversation about some of those voices that typically aren't included in history education, including, we know that there was the battle, it was one of the battles where families were split, one of the wars where families were split. But one of the ones that is before you actually had a great divide in the family that ended up with some of the family being, going to Britain along with those who'd lost the war. And so as we move forward, we had the afternoon, which Avery already began to introduce us to, and so that portion of the day was held at New Jersey Pack. It was kind of surprising to me how many people hadn't been to New Jersey Pack, so I will put in a plug selfishly, because it is a place that I've been going since it opened well over 25 years ago. I can't remember exactly when, but it is a beautiful, and there were comments from some of our group about the beauty of the main hall, as well as, we didn't go into it, but the smaller theater space as well. And so that afternoon was moderated, as you can see, by Brian Williams, and Ken Burns was there. As we move forward, you'll see that he was also joined by two other people, Sarah Bostin, who is one of the other of the three co-producers and co-directors of the film, which airs on November 16, so everyone can put that date on their calendar. And then we also had Christopher Brown, and Avery will share a few words about who he is.
Yeah, so Christopher Brown is a professor from Columbia University, and he specializes in the American Revolution, but specifically the British perspective of the war. And I think overall, coming to this event, really, you realize how unlikely it was for us to have won the war. The fact that we won the Revolutionary War was, the odds were not in our favor. And so for me, I think the main thing that I took away from it is, what are we going to do as a society moving forward to continue making the world a better place? And I think this can connect to our current history classes, but also just like as a society, like what are we doing? What do we owe to each other to try to keep, you know, bettering the country and living up to our constitutional ideals?
And so, of course, this would not have happened without the participation and support of the Board, so we thank you for that. We also want to thank Sophia and Erin, who weren't able to be here this evening, but were willing to be here and contributed to the content for tonight. Of course, also, Dr. Miller and Mr. Campbell were the teachers who were pivotal, crucial to the event happening. And then, of course, we also needed chaperones beyond that. And so I'm really grateful to Mr. Johnson and Mr. McCann and Ms. Russell, who were willing to sacrifice a day to join us. I do want to share some of the takeaways for folks who aren't here. There were comments made about just how scholarly our children were when it came to, and I'm sorry, young folks, I know I say children still, so forgive me, but how scholarly our students were when it came to really engaging in the morning, not only in both of the workshops, but especially in the afternoon, because you can imagine, I can't remember the exact number, but there were well over 1,000 students who were from across many districts in our state in New Jersey Pack. And so you're talking about four tiers of children, and sometimes the attention wasn't always where it needed to be, but that wasn't the case for our students. So we were really, really pleased that our students showed up as the scholars that they are. And in addition to that, we've received emails from parents who are talking about what their students came home sharing with them that they learned, as well as we, as adults ourselves, having appreciation for Ken Burns' work and having the opportunity to be there and to have the takeaways, because the afternoon, the video clips were seven that were specific to the New Jersey components of the documentary. And so we got to see specific details about New Jersey, as well as learn something about the cinematography behind it, because there was drone use, and for any who love film, there was talk about the rate of the film and all of the ways that technology was used to really kind of focus us as viewers on what was intended in the messaging. So thank you again for the privilege of experiencing that opportunity.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Smith Carrington. Thank you very much. We appreciate your, like, pulling this all together, and what a great opportunity for our children to attend. So thank you. You know, we do that to people. Come on back, yeah.
Are there other opportunities that we will be a revolutionary school?
Yes, so there will be opportunities. At present, they're saying for two years, so it seems as though it's intended to go slightly beyond the actual anniversary. And so at this moment, we're not sure of all of the happenings. There is a website for the whole initiative that the state is offering. There are events on the website for public members who want, or citizens who want to participate in any of the events. And I was looking at the calendar the other day. There's a lot of things, if you're interested in participating, that you can be involved in. For us as school districts who are involved, there is some curriculum that's available to integrate, where it dovetails with your curricula. And there are also resources to come, including things that PBS has already released to support the viewing of the documentary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just want to say thank you to Keisha. She was spreading the plaudits to her teachers and colleagues, but this was really, she spearheaded this entire project and got all of these folks up to experience this. So thank you, Keisha. All right, we're humming along now. Perfect. Okay, so I'm just going to touch on attendance district-wide, although most of what is shown here is going to be driven by the high school and the middle school. And I'm doing this for two reasons. The first is, this is just something we began discussing administratively in the summer, and more is a wondering, meaning that the data that we were looking at, which came from the Department of Education website, spurred some questions about our own processes and systems, some of our priorities or messaging to students about coming to school. And then those discussions ended up coinciding with some of the training that we've had in relation to our NJQ SAC audit that is coming up later on this school year. So Q SAC stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum, if I'm not mistaken. And that's the Department of New Jersey's mechanism for ensuring that districts are doing what they're supposed to do and complying with the many requirements that the DOE has for all districts in the state. And our Q SAC audit will begin with some facilities inspections by the department, and then in February, we will undergo the full audit, which touches upon curriculum and instruction and personnel and governance and some other areas. And one of the things that we were told in this, in the lead-up, in the training this year, is that the DOE is going to look very closely at chronic absenteeism, and any district with any school that has a chronic absenteeism rate above 10% will be put on a corrective action plan. And in our case, we have two schools that will wind up on corrective action plans, which we have to develop and adopt as a Board of Education as soon as possible, basically. So probably, excuse me, in October or November.
Dr. LaSousa, I'm sorry. What schools are going to be?
Middle school and high school.
Thank you.
So in addition to the Q SAC part of it, though, of course, instructional time is important, and we can't do the great things that we want to do, including what Ms. Smith Carrington was just talking about, if students are not in school. So the reference here, the citation in 18A, which is the primary statutes that govern public school district operation in New Jersey, is here on the screen. And I won't read through this, but it's 18A 38-25.1. So as I said, we have two schools that rise above 10%. The middle school, just last year, ticked up dramatically, and I want to underscore that we are still trying to determine whether that is the result of some of our own record-keeping, some of the process of submitting all of our data to the DOE in June, which we're required to do every year, or some other issues, or a combination of lots of factors. So there's no single blame game happening or definitive conclusion that we've reached with any of this. And then the high school, the last couple of years, has been higher than it should. So to put that in context a little bit, I shared this in the summer in my newsletter, just to show the trend and how we're a little bit of an outlier when it comes to other school districts. And just to get to those other school districts, I simply took some districts nearby, this is district-wide rates of absenteeism, and districts that we might compare ourselves to just from an achievement standpoint. And you can see that we were, you know, we were the highest when it came to rates of chronic absenteeism. And then, because it's not always, it's not always the best path to look at schools that we might compare ourselves to just because of geography or achievement levels, I tried to take some school districts that are comparable with respect to demographics, and some it is, you know, fairly close if you look at the subgroups there and the percentages of those subgroups. So that's how I came out with the various school districts that are a combination here of ones that perform similarly and are nearby, and others that are similar demographically. And again, you can just see that our rates of absenteeism, as we're reporting them to the state, are higher. And chronic absenteeism is defined by a student who misses 18 or more days of the school year, 10%. If we look at our demographic groups, and this is district-wide, you can see where some of our higher rates of absenteeism lie. And then, just moving through the other school districts and looking at some of the subgroups, our multilingual students are up there, almost a quarter of them are absent 18 or more times over the course of the year. Economically disadvantaged. Special education. Hispanic. White. Black. Asian. And so you can just get a feel in those charts that it's really kind of widespread across demographic groups. We're not talking about just one particular driver. So for us, we're going to, we're already, of course, working with the middle school and high school administrations and talking about this. We're looking at our systems, including our student information system. So we will develop the corrective action plan, and there are some required components, like a parent survey, about what could be preventing students from coming to school regularly, or what are the obstacles of, with, in terms of regular attendance. We have to have some form of collaboration with the PTO, which is to talk with them, and then we do need Board approval. We are waiting for the new performance reports to come out this year, which should happen, usually it happens by the end of the calendar year, although it depends on the state, but we're hopeful that we'll actually see some improvement just before we do anything. And that last year, we had better attendance rates than we did in prior years. We'll go through the Q SAC process, and we are going to do an audit of Power School. We've had Power School in place for a very long time. Power School is our student information system, but many of our other systems, like our budgeting and financial software and staff management, have already migrated to another system. So we are going to sort of look under the hood when it comes to Power School. And we'll report all this back out, and again, Board approve a corrective action plan at some point in the next couple of months. So Andrew, you can take that down and now pivot to the calendar.
Wait, I have a question.
Sure.
So I know when you got here, you looked at our absentee, our numbers, and they were not good. So what's your gut check on this? Are our kids really, like, not going to school, like, in multiples of other districts? Or what do you think?
I think that we have some idiosyncrasies with our data that we are going to find inside of Power School, and that we have some belt tightening that we could do just in terms of potential human behavior, potential follow-through with ensuring that we're reconciling absenteeism appropriately. I think we, there might be a culture here, perhaps, at least in the upper grades of a little bit more of just a loose orientation to coming to school every day. So I think it could be a combination of factors.
Thank you. Any other questions?
But we'll see. We all want to see students in school every day, and we all know that the magic happens when students are in school. So then, the next item for me, before I turn it over to some of our high school folks, is just, we have not yet adopted a calendar for the '26-'27 school year. So we're a little late in the game, because we've already begun this school year. And looking at next year's calendar, and this is just a draft of the calendar, so there's some tightening up to do, but Labor Day happens on September 7 next year. And when Labor Day falls that late, which is as late as it can fall, it really is not possible any longer, in my view, to begin the school year for students after Labor Day. It becomes necessary to start school before Labor Day. And the reasons for that are, first of all, we are a district, as we ought to be, that has made the decision that our school calendar will be reflective of the communities we serve, meaning we will not just recognize Judeo-Christian holidays over the course of the year, but we will try to have a representative approach to the observance of special days and religious days. And then on top of that, it's really just become a reality that it's not possible for a K through 12 district, in my view, to end the school year really beyond June 20 or so. And because we also commemorate, as we should, Juneteenth in New Jersey and in the United States at this point, in reality, the school year needs to end by June 18. Otherwise, what happens is that some students at the high school level who are graduating need to be at their colleges and universities for orientation programs, and we wind up losing some students who can't attend their own graduation. And even students who are juniors or sophomores may be in pre-college programs, and they end up missing the final days of school. So when you add all of that together, it becomes necessary to start the school year before Labor Day. And if you could just go up to September, Andrew, real quick. So if we accept that, and some may, some may not, but if we start before Labor Day, the question just becomes when to start before Labor Day. And Monday, August 31, or Monday before Labor Day next year, is August 31. My recommendation would be to begin the school year on that Monday, and then have a four-day week, so that the Labor Day weekend begins on the Friday, the 4th, and there's still a long Labor Day weekend. People can still get away. They'd be off Friday and Monday for the Labor Day holiday, and then they'd return, and we would move forward with the rest of the school year. This draft calendar has only five professional development days allocated, whereas the current year and last year's calendar has six. If we insert another professional development day, we can discuss when that would be, so potentially Election Day, potentially Columbus or Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then doing that would back up the final day of the school year from, I believe, June 16 on this calendar to June 17. But that is something that the Board can discuss or we can talk about. So that's the draft calendar. I leave it to you to discuss, and then we can circulate it throughout the district after tonight.
Thank you, Dr. LaSousa. Brave coming in here and making all these changes. Impressed. So I just want to say that, you know, the first thing people are going to say is, what do the teachers think? And I think that we have been laying the groundwork for this for many years. Their contracts are going around. Their contract requires them to begin work in August. So the feedback, I know you've spoken to the staff, and I know some staff are not, you know, don't like change, but overall, do people understand the reason? I think, as I said, we started looking at this in 2017, in conjunction with the Stanford survey that we administered at the high school. And, you know, kids learn better in September than they do in June, and there's a lot of studies on that, so if people want to look into that. And also for our students at the high school with AP testing, first of all, right now, they're doing a lot of work over the summer, so starting school a week early theoretically will help them. And also, on the other end of the year, when the AP tests are over... there's, there's less time to fill.
Yes. Well, let me start by saying, I wouldn't characterize it as I've spoken to the staff. I have spoken to the, the leadership of the association a little bit about this. They understand by and large. I have been through this before, so I don't, I'm not delusional. Some people will embrace this, especially after they live it for one year, because it really is great to hit Labor Day and already have some routines established for students and for teachers and so forth. And the less time you have after Memorial Day is generally something that is very well received once you get there. But on the other hand, there are folks, particularly parents who do not have, who do not have high school-age students, who would prefer to have a summer that stretches all the way, you know, till Labor Day is over. So there's no, you can't please everyone. I do believe definitively this is better for students overall. So high school students, we don't control the athletic calendar, for starters. So the NJSIA determines the start date of fall athletics. They've moved that up in order to try to create space in between each season during the year, because there was too much overlap with sports between fall and winter, and then winter and spring. So the fall season starts about August tenth for football, and then the other sports fold in after that through about August twenty-fourth. Then the, and we're going to hear about this in a minute, the, the moving up and the acceleration of the college admissions process has created a lot of stress in the beginning of senior year. And even though our professionals tell students to make sure they've contacted all of their teachers for recommendations junior year, and even though they, they counsel them to get ahead of, ahead of things, the beginning of senior year is, is quite hectic, and just about many, many of our seniors apply to college before the November first deadline, or thereabouts in the, in the fall. And then, of course, like you say, standardized testing, the rest of the country, we're an outlier in the majority of the United States. So giving kids a little bit more time with their teachers before some of the big tests, like AP exams, can also be helpful. Having said all that, the reality is, some people like the very warm water that you get at the end of August and early September. It's not perfect for everyone, but all students in this district eventually will become high school students, and I do think it is better for high school students to start even earlier than this. So my former district started like a week before this. So, and my own children. Again, not everyone's cup of tea, but there are reasons to do it.
Well, and thank you, but I will go back and say, this is something we've been talking about for many years. And in 2022, and I think I saw Michelle Tuck-Ponder back there, so she was in the room with me when we talked to the union. And so they, this is something that we discussed when we negotiated the contract, that it was really important to us. And they were like, and there was agreement back then, hence the August start date in the contract. So, you know, I just, I think, you know, over the, since 2022, we've had a lot of, you know, ups and downs. And I think this is like our first opportunity to really make strides into, into doing this. And I think it is in the best interest of kids. And I really do thank you for undertaking this.
This one isn't that heavy a lift, I don't think. But they're going to be tougher lifts out there than this one.
Okay, but your first one.
Will be, will be, will be good. And the association has been terrific. The leadership is, is great and collaborative, and they did have a couple of asks on our end if we could be mindful of certain things, which of course, I've already spoken with Andrew about. One of those items, we will do whatever we can to make the, the entry point as frictionless as possible.
So are we putting a water slide in, in, in the pack?
Not in the pack, maybe on the front lawn.
On the front lawn, all right. All right. Well, thank you.
Can I?
Yeah, sorry.
So the Memorial Day, sorry, the Memorial Day. It just, I don't know, is, do people like that, having that much time then? You know, because it's so close to when school's ending. I don't know, I was just asking.
So the, the two days around Memorial Day are only if we don't have any snow days. I think a lot of people love a long Memorial Day weekend. But one of the reasons to do that around Memorial Day is just to be sure, it gets you past any of the, the months where you could have a surprise with the weather. And the longer you wait, the less audible ling you have to do, whereas sometimes if you try to build them onto spring break, you can have something very unusual happen, even with just like powder, power outages or something that causes you to reconsider. So I've always stuck them around Memorial Day, but that's something we could, we could modify if we want.
Right. And then I do know, I mean, I'm glad we're having school on Election Day, but we have one more school that, you know, still has elections in it. So can look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. And then you have one more?
Yes. And so, actually, I'm going to let Dr. Two introduce the final presenters, because she has worked closely with them, and will give a better introduction than I can.
Good evening, everyone. So Napurna and John, do you want to come on up? So with us tonight are Napurna Shal, our College and Career Counselor at Princeton High School, and John McMichael, our Supervisor of Counseling for K to twelve. And each year, we present a matriculation report to the board. So at this month's Student Achievement Meeting, Napurna and John gave a nice overview of the class of 2025, where they're headed next. And this is really a time to celebrate all the great work our students do. Ani and Ash, you'll be in the report next year. And so it's really great to see the, the counseling that happens behind the scenes to kind of help kids land where they're supposed to land once they leave Princeton High School. So this work is over the course of an entire year, and it comes to fruition in this matriculation report. So I'm going to let them present, but just so thankful for all the work that happens behind the scenes to bring this to fruition. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I really just want to begin by saying, I feel blessed and honored that I work, get to work with all the amazing students at Princeton High School. We saw evidence of it with Avery. We have two great board liaisons up here. So every day, I learn as much from you guys as I hope you learn from me. My mission for the Princeton High School College and Career Counseling Program is really to align individuals with whatever their strengths and interests and goals are. And those can fall anywhere between a four-year college, two-year college, technical school, vocational programs, employment opportunities. Really, it's a broad spectrum of different avenues that our students choose to pursue upon leaving Princeton High School. And really, our mission is to foster a culture of equity access and informed decision-making to make sure every student feels seen and heard along that journey and supported and confident as they leave Princeton High School. In terms of the highlights for the class of 2025, we had three hundred and ninety-six graduates. Those graduates attended college or university in twenty-nine different states and three different countries. We had three hundred and seventy-one unique colleges and universities our students were accepted to, and a hundred and fifty unique colleges or universities where our students attended post-graduation. In terms of our percentage of students attending either a two-year or four-year college, overall, we had ninety-two percent of our PHS graduates pursuing a higher education path directly after graduation. Eighty-five percent of those were attending a four-year college. Seven percent of those were attending a two-year college, and eight percent fell into various other categories, including the workforce, trade school, military, or a gap year. If we look at the placement by college type, you will notice between the four-year and the two-year, let's start with the four-year numbers. The majority of our students land at private, not-for-profit, out-of-state schools, followed by public out-of-state schools, and then public in-state schools. When we look at our two-year numbers or two-year college, the majority of our students land at public in-state institutions, a few public out-of-state, and a few for-profit out-of-state as well. This is a list of our most applied-to colleges and universities. Historically, Rutgers always has the number one spot as the college that the majority of Princeton High School students overwhelmingly apply to. Princeton is in our backyard, and you, you'll see that there's a robust number of our students that apply to Princeton. Northeastern in the last few years has really gained traction and has a lot of applications from PHS, and then you can sort of follow that list down. On the average, we have our students applying to about nine unique schools in their year. In terms of the most attended universities and colleges, Rutgers once again tops that list, where we had thirty-one enrollments at Rutgers University, followed by Mercer County Community College. We had twenty-four students enrolling there, and Princeton, New Jersey, right in our backyard, seventeen enrollments there. We are New Jersey strong and proud at PHS. About half of the most frequently attended colleges are public universities. And as I mentioned, Rutgers really continues to be the most applied-to and most attended-to college. In terms of applications, this is, these are numbers from the Common Application. So year-over-year, Common Application saw a seven percent increase, and a continued growth in the number of college-bound applicants. In terms of our PHS applications on the Common App, they stayed pretty flat. But what you will see in the next slide is that outside of the Common App, we had students applying through other means directly to the college or through the Coalition App. So we also see that steady increase in the number of applications. Here is our application numbers from twenty-four to twenty-five. You will see that for the total applications, our numbers increased year to year. For the Common App, they decreased slightly, but not much. But then for other applications, there was a pretty significant increase year to year. In terms of the, the application plans, our student, our accepted students indicated, we had the most students in 2026 apply via early action plan, and that makes a lot of sense, because early action is a nine-binding agreement. So students really get their acceptances early on, but don't have to commit to those colleges until the May first decision deadline. Rolling admissions, or sorry, regular decision was the next popular. That deadline is a little bit later on January first, so it gives students a little bit more time to put their applications together. We had a robust standing and rolling decision school. So those are schools where, once the application opens, students can apply immediately and are likely to get a decision within four to six weeks after the application rates. So we again have a strong growth in our early action and regular decision and rolling action numbers. Early decision saw a slight decrease, probably shifting away from like those binding commitments, which also come with a strong financial commitment. Emerging categories like early action three and early action four, Auburn University has like four early action plans. Crazy. And it starts September first, October first, November first, December first. It is wild. But colleges are really trying to get creative in securing the yields for their classes, so they're coming up with all kinds of new, new plans. And then early decision two and restrictive early action also had a significant percentage increase, though through smaller bases. Our PHS graduates land in different places in the world. This year, we had attendance at, for our seven students in Canada, two in France, and three in Scotland. We are a pretty well-known school in not only the United States, but across the world, well-recognized, and our students show that there. Here is a visual image of the different states. Our students are attending college within the United States. They truly span across the country. The Midwest is not as much densely applied to, but you'll notice Texas, California, and the East Coast show high numbers of enrollments. In terms of our under-resourced students, and by under-resourced, I mean those students that are currently enrolled in a free or reduced lunch program. We had a strong placement in four-year colleges, an eighty-two percent placement rate. I always like to mention that I have a very strong partner in crime here with Andrea Dynan, that she and I work extremely closely together to help these students from the summer through the entire application process and financial aid process throughout the year to cross the finish line. So we're especially proud of these numbers, that we have such strong post-secondary placement in a four-year or two-year college there. In terms of the ethnicity breakdown, PHS, the majority of our students are white students at a hundred and seventy-eight, followed by a hundred and one Asian students, forty-nine Hispanic students, forty-two multicultural students, and we actually had one student that identified as Alaskan and Native American. If you look at the post-graduation placement rate by ethnicity, you will notice that our four-year colleges, four-year college by far is the highest-attended type of post-secondary plan across all the different ethnicities. We have a few other scattered post-secondary plans in the gap year in military and trade school workforce. This is our post-graduation placement rate by ethnicity. We had a hundred percent placement rate for our Alaskan and Native American with that one student attending college. The second highest was our Asian students with a ninety-nine percent, followed by our multiracial and white students at ninety-two and ninety-three percent respectively. Our black students fell at an eighty-four percent rate, and our Hispanic students at an eighty-two percent rate. For those students that have an IEP, their four-year, four-year college attendance rate was at fifty-eight percent, two-year college rate at eighteen percent. And then you'll notice the numbers sort of dwindle between vocational school, workforce, postgraduate year, military, and other opportunities. And that's just a visual image of the numbers that I just talked about earlier. And with that, again, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Napurna. First, I want to say the blessing is ours that we have you working with our kids and our families. So it's really, you do a great job. And, and I know you know each one of those kids and where they all went.
I do.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
Thank you. Thank you. It was excellent. I super appreciate all the hard work you guys do, especially love seeing the under-resourced, because I know the amount of work that must go behind that. I have one request. I am very concerned about the, about boys. There, the women are now, girls are now sixty percent of college things. I would love to see how we're doing here in Princeton, and are we serving our boys, and are we, are we getting them in? So I would love to see that break out, if that was something you might consider.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think that's it for my report.
Thank you.
Moving on to our first public comment. So this is a public comment on anything agenda or non-agenda. So if you would like to talk?
No, let's go aside.
Sorry. Oh, there's a Sorry. I mean, you swatted, didn't you? Okay, so public comment. If you guys, if you'd like, if you can keep it to three minutes, we appreciate it. And first up is Brian Levinson.
Your mic.
If you could just state your name and the street you live on, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Great. My name is Brian Levinson. I live on Patton Avenue in Princeton. Speaking here tonight in support of common sense limits on smartphones and social media during instructional time. So this is happening right now in public and private schools, red states and blue states all across the country, and it's not yet happening in Princeton. And I think there's no time like the present. Just last week, the Murphy administration issued important guidance to New Jersey schools, spelling out different types of implementation and even necessary exemptions. For me, the issue is doubly important. So I'm a local parent. I have a third grader at Riverside, but I'm also an educator. I teach high school history in West Windsor, where we have a great absentee rate. In my experience, I've worked in schools now for more than a decade. Unchecked smartphone use by teens is just bad for the school community. It's bad for student health, especially mental health, and it's bad for academic achievement. So I won't bore you with stats. The governor's report already makes a compelling case. It's a database case for taking a more hands-on approach. But here's what I've observed in my own classroom. First, there's a substantial increase in focus and engagement when students are not distracted by smartphones and social media. This became clear several years ago, when many of us teachers required students to put their phones in pouches at the start of class. Second, there are surprisingly few student complaints when this happens. I think the teenagers, more than old folks, are pretty quick to realize that smartphones and social media are not actually expressions of freedom. In fact, sometimes they act in just the opposite way. But no classroom exists in a vacuum. It's simply not enough that some teachers in Princeton or in West Windsor are putting up pouches. up pouches. We need the board and the school administration to articulate a strong district-wide position. Because when you shift responsibility down to the classroom level, I think you're doing a particular disservice to new teachers in the district. New teachers are dealing with all kinds of time pressures and curricular pressures. They're working to tirelessly develop new lessons and find their voice in the classroom. And they don't want to be seen as taking things away from kids. That was certainly the case for me when I started. So having a strong board-approved policy and a coordinated approach across the district would no longer force teachers into that corner. It would help unleash the potential of students and teachers alike. So in closing, members of the board, this is the easiest decision you get to make this year. You have political support, you have community support, you have teacher support. There's no great financial investment here. And it's not as if you're the first school district that's going to put common sense limits in place. But here's the problem. You, you risk becoming one of the last. And I think that's a real concern for the Princeton community. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Lundquist.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, thank you all for being on the board and for what you do. My name is Mary Lundquist. I live on Merwick Court in Princeton. I'm a parent. I have three kids in the school district, a sixth grader, a third grader, and a three-year-old in the 3K program. I am here also to talk about cellphone policy. This is a huge concern for me. Just piggybacking off of what Brian's comments were, there's the governor's report on, on policies. New Jersey is behind in the country, setting up a, a district-wide policy. I personally would like to see a bell-to-bell policy that promotes not only more focus in the classroom, but also more connection and focus outside the classroom, in between classes. So bell-to-bell would be they put pouches, put their cellphones in pouches for the whole day. And there is strong evidence for this to, to be good for kids throughout the day, being less distracted. I really care about kids being able to have their minds wander, have curiosity about things, being observant about things in their surroundings. I think that media, it's definitely, definitely going to be hard. So I prefer not to call it a cellphone ban, but a pro-focus, pro-play, pro-socialization phone policy that I'd like Princeton to think about and adopt. Those in-between times are a great opportunity for, for children, for kids, and for all of us frankly, to, to grow as people, free of distraction. And, and Mr. La Souza, you talked about absenteeism, and it just made me think that when we are looking at our phones and our devices, we might be physically present in a place, but our minds are not there. And I think that in school, if we care about being present and making the most of that time, then having a policy that promotes, promotes that just makes sense. And, and New Jer, and Princeton could be a leader in this if, if we take action soon. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Avery Barr. She left, right? She leave? The student, yeah.
If, if she's not here, I also, if you, I have permission to speak for another parent who submitted one, but it was kind of last minute. And she asked me to read it out loud if there's time.
Um, who's the parent? Cause we.
Yeah, Ann Decter.
Oh, we'll read that. Yeah.
You read it? Okay.
Mr. Harris will read it.
Okay.
When we're done with the people who are here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Tuck-Ponder, Laurel Circle. And for the first time in 21 years, I have no children in the school district.
And this is how you're spending your nights?
This is how, I miss you all so much. So I have three, three issues, and I'm going to try to get them done in three minutes. And the first is going to take a little privilege. I'm so excited about the Revolutionary War activity that's in the school. I'm the class of 1976, bicentennial graduate. And so I spent most of my senior year celebrating the bicentennial of the United States. And it's so rich and so important, and New Jersey played such a big part. So I am thrilled that our students are getting to experience that. So that's, that's very cool. My second matter has to do with the matriculation report, which as usual is stellar and it looks great for our school district. But as I stated in the SAC meeting, one of the things I wanted to bring to the board's attention and also to the attention of the college counseling group is that according to the Journal of Blacks in Higher Education, among highly selective institution, institutions, black first-year student enrollment dropped by a staggering 16.9% this year, the sharpest drop of any major racial group. This was the first admissions cycle since the Supreme Court ended the use of race-sensitive admissions at colleges and universities. In contrast, white first-year student enrollment at these highly selective institutions only decreased by 5%. Over the past two years, black first student enrollment at the country's top universities has decreased by 18.4%. Now, we can't do anything about who the colleges admit, but I think having that awareness and being sensitive in counseling black students who are applying to college is critically important. And the recognition that there is a movement in this country that is negatively impacting black students specifically, but all students across the board. So I just wanted to raise that issue for that. And my third issue is a question, and I know you're not answering questions, but it's about preschool, going all the way to the other end of the spectrum. And what we've been, what we've been hearing, and I'm here on behalf of Princeton Parents for Black Children, is that the preschool program at Princeton Community Village is in jeopardy of being moved. And I don't know if that's accurate or true, but that is something that we're hearing. So it would be great if there's any intention or any discussion around that issue, we would certainly like to weigh in about the importance of locating that preschool program at PCV. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you for what you do. It's good to see you all.
It's nice to see you too. Thank you, Michelle. Dr. Chu, is there, I know it's early in the year, so has there been any discussion?
Yes, I, I just want to maybe talk to you, Michelle, offline and find out more information about what you're hearing, and then we can clarify that. That would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you. So that's it for the people who signed up. Is there anyone else here? Come on up, just state your name and the street you live on, please.
Good evening. My name is Ulrich Münner. I live on Bertrand Drive. I got an email about the cellphone thing, and it's something that I've been feeling about strongly for a long time. And I was thrilled that there's a meeting where we can address you guys doing this important work. I have two children that graduated from Princeton High School, one this year and one three years ago. Actually asked them about this matter, and they said, yes, absolutely. We would have preferred if we had not had access, if not everybody had had access to cellphones all the time. As a parent, I was always stunned that you can ask them on a text message or WhatsApp anytime during the school day, and you get a response immediately. I always thought that's just unbelievable that that can be true. And it is true. They were just responsive to my texts, which I guess is a good thing as a parent. But in this context, I just found it truly shocking. So I cannot emphasize enough that this should be changed as quickly as possible. I'm also an educator. I teach at Princeton, an economics, large economics class. And I have an electronics-free learning environment policy for many years now. No cellphones in my classroom. If I get any, if I see anybody, they first get a talking to, and then they get points deducted from their final grade. It is absolutely detrimental to learning if people can sock, can shop for socks or, or be on social media. It is, it not only creates a diversion for them, but it also, everybody else sees that there's this alternative activity that you could rather be doing. So it creates an atmosphere of what's happening there in front of you is unimportant. It is really, in my mind, one of the most important challenges to education. So I urge you to move as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to say something, a public comment? No, then Mr. Harris, I think you have a few emails to read.
Okay, the first is from Ann Decter. Dear Public Princeton School, dear Princeton Public School Board members and Dr. La Souza, my name is Ann Decter. I'm the mother of two PPS students. Our son is in sixth grade and our daughter is in fourth. I would like to express my strong support for a bell-to-bell cellphone and smartwatch policy in our schools, in line with the strong recommendations from the New Jersey Commission on the effects of social media on adolescents and the guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education. I thank you for all your hard work, for all the hard work you do for our kids, and urge you to adopt and implement this common sense policy for PPS. And please know you will have the strong support on this policy from the vast majority of Princeton families. Sincerely, Ann Decter. The next comes from Allison Muller, or Mueller. Dear President Kendall and members of the Princeton Board of Education, I would like to voice my strong support for the adoption of a bell-to-bell phone policy in our district. I am the parent of a pre-K daughter who will be entering the public school system in the coming years. And as both an educator and a parent, this issue is very important to me. Phones do not belong in schools. I also bring professional perspective to this conversation. I hold a pedagogy certificate from Columbia's, Columbia University School of Professional Studies, where I participated in the pedagogical lab, an immersive program designed to help facilitate, help faculty translate real-world expertise into effective classroom practice. Through this training, I studied classroom interactions, engagement strategies, and methods to create focused, supportive learning environments. From that lens, it is clear to me that smartphones are a major impediment to meaningful learning. The evidence is overwhelming. Unrestricted phone use undermines attention, interrupts peer-to-peer interaction, and negatively impacts mental health. Schools should be special places of focus and connection, where students are free to fully engage with their teachers, peers, and learning materials. These goals are incompatible with constant, constant access to smartphones. New Jersey has now issued guidance recommending districts prohibit phone and social media throughout, social media use throughout the entire school day, not just during instructional time. I urge you to follow that recommendation. A bell-to-bell policy will send strong, consistent message that our district priorities, learning, student well-being, and healthy school, and a healthy school climate. Thank you for your attention and for considering the voices of parents and educators who want to see Princeton lead with a policy that protects students' ability to learn and thrive. Sincerely, Allison Muller. We have two more. This one is from Rena Bliss. Dear members of the board, as senior personnel, as senior personnel of a National Science Foundation Center for Responsible AI Governance and a technology researcher focused on the harms of social media, ed tech, and AI platforms, I strongly advise that you adopt a bell-to-bell limitation policy on internet-enabled devices for our school district per the New Jersey Department of Education Guidance for Schools on Student Use of Internet-enabled Devices. I cannot attend tomorrow's meeting, so feel free to share my statement with those in attendance. Reach out if you have questions. Dr. Rena Bliss. And our final comment online was Rachel, from Rachel Winfrey. Dear BOE members, I am the parent of two PHS students, one who graduated in 2022, one currently a sophomore. I am ready to submit a comment on the topic of smartphone bans in Princeton schools, which I believe is on the agenda for your September 30th meeting. I'm sorry that I am not able to attend the meeting in person. I urge you to support a smartphone ban that prohibits students from using phones while at school. There is so much published evidence that phones in schools are harming kids' learning as well as their social interactions. Parenthetically, although speaking as a parent and as a teacher, the problem doesn't really need studies as it is obvious. End parent parentheses. The studies I've read show that bell-to-bell phone bans work best. Students leave their phones in their lockers and do not carry them to class or to lunch recess. For example, a 2024 National Education Association survey of K-12 teachers found that phone use in classrooms is two to three times more disruptive at schools with cellphone policies that are left up to individual teachers or that allow phone use between classes as compared with schools having bell-to-bell policies. Jonathan Haitz's Substack has good resources on this topic, such as the recent post, "How To and How Not To Mandate Phone-Free Schools." As a PHS parent, I think removing phones from school is particularly important at the high school school level. This is supported by a 2024 Pew Research Center poll, which found that 72% of high school teachers say cellphones are a major problem in their classroom, a much higher percentage than teachers of middle school or elementary school. The results from counties and states that have banned cellphones in schools are encouraging. For example, this article with a link included, shows that a year after cellphones were banned from public schools in Australia, 87% of principals said students are now less distracted in the classroom, and 86% say social interactions among students have improved. Thank you for considering these comments in your discussion. Best wishes, wishes, Rachel.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak at public comment right now? No? Okay. So we don't have anything on the agenda tonight about cellphone policy, so I guess it's in the air. Did you have anything you wanted to share on that, Dr. La Souza?
It's in the air for all parents, I think, speaking as a parent. I, I can't recall in all my time agreeing with, with almost every word stated in the public comments section of the, of an agenda, as I do tonight. I guess I'll say a few things. So it's correct that there's no district level or board-level policy governing the use of cellphones, which is probably true in most districts in New Jersey, I would say. But there is, there is school policy, and, and that happens through the student handbooks and codes of conduct. And essentially, in this district, like I would say most, there is a ban right now of cellphones in K-8. Students in our elementary schools and at the middle school where I was today, they're not walking around with their cellphones. They're not permitted to have their cellphones out in class. So there is essentially a bell-to-bell ban, I would say, in practicality, K-8. In the high school, there's a different set of circumstances. So I have been involved in implementing, I agree wholeheartedly with especially the gentleman from West Windsor about it being impossible to think that there's going to be a policy that could work on a teacher or classroom level. It places teachers in a very poor position if they're trying to implement a ban if colleagues down the hall are not doing the same. It has to be something that comes from a board or district level or a school level and where there's a lot of buy-in. I have been involved in a, in that level of policy, and it involved having to place every student in every classroom, having to place the phone in a holder. They were not permitted to retrieve the phone to go to the restroom, which actually dramatically reduced the number of visits to restrooms. That was one of the things we didn't anticipate, but it was true. The only times they were permitted to have their phones was during recess, or during lunch, excuse me, or study hall, which I know is not a bell-to-bell. I have to echo some of the remarks about students and their response. I was very surprised at how supportive students were for the policy once we implemented it, as were parents. And of course, students still could retrieve a phone if we had an evacuation or an emergency of any kind. So it reduced the concern from some parents that they might need to get in touch with their children in an emergency, or the concern from some parents, which can be legitimate, that they might not need to get a message to their child immediately, but they might want their child to know something by the end of the day, three hours later. And if a student was able to have their phone on their person in between class or during study hall, at least they knew that they could get and, some type of message to their child. I probably deep down think, or not even deep down, I think if you put a lie detector in, test in front of me, I would, I think the best thing is a, a bell-to-bell ban or just incinerating every phone in the community. But there are some real logistical challenges to that, which are, and some of those reasons are ones we didn't in my prior life go for a bell-to-bell. Princeton High School welcomes 1,500 students every day. The building was probably built to house 250 kids, I would guess, 100 years ago. And even though there are many, many additions and many entrances, trying to have 1,500 kids enter their phones into a sealable pouch or remove them from a sealable pouch in the beginning of the day and the end of the day requires a lot of work and expense potentially. So it's, it's hard to do that. I think also there's a reality coming from someone who was a high school administrator, both a principal and a, and an assistant principal. And that is that trying to ensure that 1,500 students are complying with that policy is also an inordinate amount of effort and potential expense, because students will bring burner phones in, they will. expense, because students will bring burner phones in, they will have multiple phones on their persons. I've experienced this. It is very hard to watch over 1,500 students all day long in between classes that change with different activities that they go to in the afternoon. So I guess what I'm saying is that it's irrefutable that heavy cellphone and social media use is terrible for children. It's much better for them, in every way we can probably think of, to not be married to their phones. And I do think it's appropriate to be having this conversation and considering ways we can implement consistent and district or school-wide policies that reduce the amount of cellphone usage among students and increase the amount of focus and socialization that they experience with other people, including not just their peers but their teachers. So no definitive answer, but it's one we can continue to talk about. We can bring it to the policy committee and discuss it there. And, and of course, broaden the discussion with some other administrators in the district who would be the ones ultimately tasked with ensuring that whatever policy we create is actually, can be implemented and administered appropriately.
Memory serves, didn't you have a lawsuit when you were in Chatham against the major domos of social media or something? And how's that going?
We have one here, too.
Yes, Princeton is, and that's about social media, though, not cellphones.
What's social media?
Ash, of course.
Okay, hi. I know this is the first meeting, but I have a couple quick thoughts. And as a student, I think there actually is a lot of support for having cellphone, like, not bell-to-bell, but like in classes, having cellphone pouches. A lot of teachers have this already, but I think having it standardized throughout school, having that consistency for students would be supported by many students, and it would help not only the students who have problems with their phones, but also the students who care about other students' learning and want to have a more productive classroom environment. I think one of the main concerns, I'm not trying to speak for all of the students, but one of the main concerns that I hear for students, at least among my, the people that I talk to, is that we, like, live in a society where most people have cellphones and most people have constant connectivity. And like, even many of you now have your cellphones, like, on the table. So having a bell-to-bell ban doesn't provide an environment where we're teaching kids how to manage having it, like, on their person and also, like, being able to learn and be separate from it. So having a bell-to-bell ban might just result in kids going home and spending a lot of time on their phone. Yes, they already do that. But, like, spending a lot more time on their phone because they've been without it all day. And so having classroom bans and then having, like, providing students with opportunities to learn how to manage having it is something that I think is really valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so more to come on that.
Whoever picked you guys did a good job, I think. This is a good sign. Thank you, thank you for those comments.
All right, moving, oh, no, we did public comment. Now we're moving on to I-1 harassment, intimidation, bullying; I-2 school self-assessment, anti-bullying Bill of Rights. The student board members, I'm going to turn it back to you, it's not on the agenda, the agenda got mixed up, but if there's anything that you want to tell us about what you want to do this year or take it away.
Yeah, so obviously, we haven't really been in school for that long, but there's homecoming this Friday and the homecoming dance is Saturday, so we've done a lot of planning around that at student council. This week is Spirit Week, so we all get to dress up and kind of do themes within, among our peers. Today, Monday was, what was it, pajama day? Today was surfers versus bikers. It's very fun and a way to get everyone involved in this fun week leading up to homecoming. And yeah.
Yeah, I also think to answer your question in terms of our goals, I think for me and Ani talking, we see a lot of disconnect with the students and, like, the board. A lot of students that I know don't know, like, what the board is or what they do. So, I mean, as liaisons, we obviously help liaise with the students and the board, but we're also hoping that we're going to be able to inform the student, like, the students more about what happens with the board, like, on a more widespread, like, student body basis and just have, like, more awareness about that.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to having you here this year. Now we're going to go to the board committee highlights, and Beth is up first, because I could tell she, you twitched.
I did?
Yeah.
Twitched. Oh, my goodness. I just wanted to note that, you notice how most of the board members, we don't have our phones on the table. That was actually intentional this year.
And no computers.
No computers, just the people who are running the meetings, because we used to have them. We also, we don't, we really want to set an example that we're here in present with each other, so hopefully that helps.
Good job.
So, policy first?
No, long-term planning.
Oh, long-term planning. The committee met on September 11th with the district team to preview next steps, in terms of review next steps in the implementation of the growth referendum projects approved by taxpayers in January 2025. The district architects noted that the projects remain on track for a targeted mid-November bid date. Prior to this date, the projects will be reviewed by the NJ Department of Community Affairs, or DCA, the Office of State Comptroller, the local soil conservation district, and the Delaware and Raritan Canal Committee, Commission. In addition, the projects are also the subject of a conditional use hearings before the town planning board. At a September 25th hearing, the town planning board reviewed and made suggestions and approved the referendum projects plans at Princeton Middle School and Little Brook Elementary. We anticipate that the remaining projects at Community Park School will be reviewed in October.
16th.
On October 16th?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a public planning board meeting?
Yes.
The committee remains highly focused on getting these projects out for bid in time to ensure work can begin next summer, in keeping with the schedule communicated to the public in connection with the January 2025 referendum. We appreciate the hard work of our district team and the cooperation of municipal officials and staff on this complex and time-sensitive work that will help us welcome new students as our community grows. The next scheduled meeting is on October 20th.
Thank you, Beth. I did want to add that the meeting on September 25th was a special planning board meeting that the town, the municipality officials set up for us, understanding the urgency. So we appreciate their collaborativeness. And the October 16th is also a special meeting.
Yes.
So we're very grateful for their partnership as we try to outrun the tariffs.
That's right. That's exactly right.
And get approval. So thank you for reminding me of that. Up next, we have operations, and I'm going to guess it's Susan, because you were called.
Hi, we met on September 18th at 1:00 p.m. First, we received an update on the referendum projects that would be closed from the work over the summer. We received reports that between 95 and 100% of almost all the projects had been completed, which was great news and, you know, are hopeful for the final few projects, the last few items to be closed shortly. We then got a report from Sustainable Princeton, who is working with the district, won on potential thoughts on implementing solar in our district. We received a small update on the Trees for School grant that the district had been awarded, and then on the electric bus grant, where we're watching out the window to see if we now have our two buses, which were delivered. We also received updates on smaller non-referendum projects, including an in-house solution for district building signage that are, will handle in-house, talks about bike racks and HVAC, smaller HVAC projects that are being done around the district. And finally, we got a technology update from Todd, and he focused on communications, both within buildings and between buildings, and the process that the district is going to, to explore different ways to upgrade our systems in terms of security. Our next meeting will be October 23rd at 1:00 p.m. and is open to the public.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. Harris, are those electric buses in use yet? They are.
So they're in use, and we also did get our DC Fast Charger installed as well, finally.
Wow. Are they yellow?
Yes, they look like standard buses. You can tell the difference. There's a little blue bird on the top one of them, and it does say Electric School Bus down on the side.
And if you're behind it, you're not inhaling exhaust.
That's also correct.
So that's great. So hopefully, maybe we all be behind one of those. Thank you. All right, moving on to personnel with Debbie.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met on September 11th. We discussed our district liaisons. We discussed a sidebar with pressa that is on the agenda tonight for approval. We discussed some personnel reorganizations that are also on the agenda, and then we discussed several other personnel issues. Thank you.
Thanks. Sounds an exciting meeting. Moving on now, we're going back to Beth for policy.
Policy met on September 9th, and we discussed the policies that are on tonight's agenda. They're coming from self-assessment, for the most part, updates on procedures, and, you know, such things as student sun protection, which is where we're kind of required to do that. So you'll see those on the agenda. And we look forward to talking about the cellphone and cellular communication policies in the future that's on our list. We meet next on October 7th.
Thank you, Beth. Next up, last but not least, student achievement with Eleanor.
Thank you. The Student Achievement Committee met on September 18th at 9 o'clock, and we had two presentations on our public agenda. The first was a preview of the matriculation report that you've all heard tonight from John McMichael and Nupurna Shah. And the second was an overview of the timeline for a 6-12 humanities program review from Kim Tu. So the district periodically conducts curricular reviews for different subjects to make sure that our offerings are strong, accessible, and coherent, and up to date and everything. And while elementary English Language Arts have received a lot of attention recently with a new ELA program, 6-12 English Language Arts and Social Studies have not had a review for several years, and so they are due. We expect that a report will come to SAC in May, and so we'll see, we're very excited to see what that will be. And after those presentations, we went into closed session. Our next meeting will take place on October 23rd at 9 o'clock.
Thank you, Eleanor. And I almost forgot about equity with Debbie.
Thank you. The Equity Committee met in person on September 9th. We discussed how and why the Equity Committee was first established. This led to a discussion on extra costs associated with attending Princeton Public Schools if your child wants to participate in academic clubs, music programs, athletics, and language trips, language trips, sorry. We also discussed who participates in extracurricular activities and who does not, and why. Margarita shared her findings on disproportionality in special education and a few next steps, which will include more training and professional development. The last item we discussed was chronic absenteeism, which Dr. LaSousa had shared with us today. And in Spirit Week, whatever you want to call it, we are wearing our Spirit shirts, so wanted to be part of that.
I want to make a comment. It's not that I don't care. It's that my house is really disorganized and I can't find my shirt. We'll do it again. Don't, please. Let me tell you first if I have to.
Thank you, Debbie. Okay, moving on now to the rest of the agenda. K-1, the policies we're first reading that Beth mentioned, then moving on to personnel. L-1, retirement. L-2, resignations. I just wanted to say a special thank you to Anna Rose Gabel. She was one of our ELL teachers at the high school, and she's someone who, her teaching became part of the fabric of her life, and she's taking a job closer to home, but we'll miss her. And thank her for her service. L-3, we have appointments. L-4, transfer reassignment. L-5, personnel items. L-6, leave of absence. L-7, substitute student placements. L-8, curriculum and instruction. L-9, student services. L-10, non-athletic EPS. L-11, six-period compensation. L-12, athletic appointments. L-13, separation agreement. L-14, pressa sidebar agreement. L-15, pressa Schedule C stipend appointment, 25, 26. Moving on to M-1, curriculum and instruction, grant application acceptance. And 1, for special services, commission for the blind revised. And 2, educational placement of students, 25, 26. And 3, educational placements of pupils, 25, 26, Worcester County Technical Schools. And, and for care option for kids, revised. Moving on to the business agenda, O-1, construction payments. O-2, contracts. O-3, financial reports is an action item. Can I get a motion, please? Ari, second Mara.
Epstein.
Beth Behren?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
Yes.
Debbie Bromfield?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Ari Meisel?
Yes.
Christopher Santarpio?
Yes.
I'm going to say it right correctly one of these days, I promise. I won't stutter. Catherine Lar?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you. O-6 is funds transfer, no, I'm sorry. O-4 is fire and evacuation drills. O-5 is fundraisers, and I just want to clarify that this is an internal, actually, Mr. Harris, why don't you enlighten us, please?
It's just, it's for anything that happens within the district, so it doesn't include PTOs or anything like that. It's just for fundraisers that are anticipated to go over $5,000.
Okay. So I guess in the whereas preamble, it does say parent-student, parent-teacher associations. So is it possible to strike that from?
I believe I would need a motion to modify that.
Can I get a motion? Debbie, second Mara?
Can you mark that?
Oh, Chris. Oh, wait, but...
You have to note also that some of the booster clubs are also 501(c)(3), they're separate legal entities, just like the parent-teacher organization.
It says, okay. Just because people are going to wonder who we're talking to.
In the wording, I think it says parent-teacher organization or association, so we're organizations.
And booster clubs.
And booster clubs. The point being that those are entities that are separate legal entities from Princeton Public Schools, where the other organizations are within Princeton Public Schools.
Okay, I'm sorry, what?
Nothing, anything separate that are separate organizations, this wouldn't apply.
This wouldn't apply to?
We would just make a motion that would be any...
So can we make a motion to limit this authorization to school district-only clubs and fundraising issues? Is that right?
Any, we can say at the end, this excludes any organizations separate from, any legal organizations separate from the school district. Do you want to say something?
I'm debating on whether we should just postpone this one, so that way we can workshop it, so we get it correct.
Okay.
So I would cut this out for now.
Okay, we're going to table it.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, O-5.
Okay. Is that going to cause any delay in any implementation? Good.
This is, this is, again, this is best practice.
Yes.
This isn't required.
Yes.
So I think if we postpone till October, it's no harm.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, moving on. O-6, funds transfer. O-7, grant acceptance. Yes, we're hopeful to get some of that. O-8, items for disposal and sale. O-9, miles reimbursement. O-10, registration travel agenda. O-11, student transportation contracted Dunzin. Moving on now, our second public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to us about anything? Nothing?
Doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on now to the consent vote. Can I get a motion? Chris, second, Eleanor.
One moment. I just, I just want to point out that I just removed that from the consent vote, so that way it's not there. I'm sorry, repeat the first and second, please.
It was Chris and Eleanor. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Beth Behren?
Yes, yes.
Adam Bierman?
Yes.
Debbie Bromfield?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Ari Meisel?
Yes.
Christopher Santarpio?
Yes.
Catherine Lar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I appreciate that we tabled that. Thank you. Closing discussion of the board, I just wanted to say, Dr., or I wanted to ask, I forgot to ask, the calendar, how will that get out to the community?
I was going to email it to all parents and staff tomorrow.
Okay, that's great. And the matriculation report, Dr. Tu, will be on the website tomorrow?
Yes, I'll put a tech ticket in and it'll go on the website.
Excellent, thank you. With that, our next meeting is the last Tuesday, I think it's the 28th, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, of October. In the meantime, great things, have a great homecoming. That's very exciting. If, it's the only time all year we have lights at the football field. So I'm sure you've been invited.
I have, and I've heard that from a lot of people.
Yes, yes. And with that, could I get a motion to adjourn? Mara, second Ari. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.